So I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Town of Groton Select Board for July 1st. Thank you for joining here with us tonight, for paying attention at home. We, as typically we do, we have our announcements and a review of the agenda, followed by a public comment period, and then the town manager's report. Under the town manager's report, we may discuss the agenda schedule. We will consider ratifying a handful of appointments of the town manager. We will consider making a select board appointment to the cultural council and an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals. We will receive updates on the Affordable Housing Trust terms and members and the Complete Streets Committee. We will discuss and approve a letter to the Town of Pepperell regarding their landfill project, and we will have an update on the town hall hours during the upcoming holiday period. We will then at 7:15 meet in joint session with the planning board to consider appointing David Bonnet, Bonnet Bonnet, to the planning board until the May 2020 annual town election. We then have our regular ongoing list of issues. We may get updates on those. We have select board liaison reports in one set of minutes from June 17th. Does anyone have announcements? Mark, do you want to share the website, or do you want to do that?
I should do that under the other thing.
The public comment period. All right, moving along, the town manager's report.
Okay, I will buzz through the town manager's report. I've appointed Deborah Mill Normandine to the old burying ground committee, Laura DeGroot, Pat Riley, and John Ellenberger to the trails committee. All of these appointments will be through June 30th of 2020, so I'm asking the select board to consider ratifying those appointments tonight.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Yeah, Becky.
I do have a question. So the old burying ground committee, they are responsible only for the old burying ground.
Correct, correct.
And according to the website and the town report, it looks like there's a couple, there's three vacancies on that five-person board?
There are.
So I guess it's just worth highlighting that to the public. There are vacancies on the old burying ground commission, which is responsible for managing the very old cemetery on Hollis Street, at the corner of Hollis Street and School Street. But I also have another question. Who manages the other cemetery?
That is a private organization that has their own board of directors, not affiliated with the town whatsoever.
Oh, and what is the name of the private organization? Do you know?
I knew you were going to ask me as soon as I said that. Joshua.
Groton Cemetery Association.
Cemetery Association, yeah, I believe. Groton Cemetery Association.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion on the table to ratify the appointments that the town manager has made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The cultural council has recommended that the board appoint Kim Henry to the council. Her term would expire on June 30th, 2025. It's a six-year term. And the ZBA has recommended that the board appoint Chris Sweeney as an alternate member of the board. That term would be through June 30th, 2020. I would ask the board to consider making those appointments this evening, based on the recommendations from the two boards. So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions? All in favor of making those two appointments?
Aye. Aye.
Here's where I do a mea culpa, that Josh's memory is better than mine, and thank you, Josh, for pointing that out. Josh's term, we thought Josh's term ended in 2020 because we thought it was a three-year appointment when we did the town report. It's actually a two-year appointment, so Josh was 100% correct. His term did end on June 30th, 2019. So Becky was appointed correctly through June 30th, 2021. The terms of Sheila Julian and David Wilder also expired on June 30th, 2019, and we did not bring those to you because we thought they expired in '20. So I'm going to ask the board tonight to reappoint both Ms. Julian and Mr. Wilder to the trust. Once you make those appointments, the terms of the members will be what you see. Becky, David, and Sheila will retire, their terms will expire in 2021. Next year Stuart Schulman and Colleen Neff's terms are up. So I do apologize for those errors, and I'm glad the board and Josh was patient with us as we went through there and corrected it. So I would respectfully request that the board appoint Mr. Julian, Ms. Julian, and Mr. Wilder to the Affordable Housing Trust. So moved.
Second.
Just a question under discussion.
Please.
So at least, I believe under the charter for the trust that two members have to be either selectmen or appointees of the board.
Well, all of them are appointees by the selectmen. At least one has to be a member of the board.
So when Becky was appointed a couple weeks ago to replace me, was she designated specifically as the select board member?
I assume that was the case. Since she's on the board.
I think we should reaffirm that vote.
That's fine.
So I would move that this board reappoint Sheila Julian and David Wilder to the Affordable Housing Trust, term to expire June 30th, 2021.
I think you had already made that motion.
We already had that motion.
Oh, did you make it?
I think John made it.
That was already made and seconded. So do you want to make an amendment to add?
No, I'll do that second.
Okay. Then the motion on the table is to appoint Ms. Julian and Mr. Wilder. All in favor?
Aye.
And I move that the board reaffirm its previous vote to appoint Rebecca Pine to the Affordable Housing Trust, term to expire June 30th, 2021, and designate her as the member of the select board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The board had asked for further clarification on the Complete Streets program and the future of the committee and the program itself. I spoke to George Barringer, and he did confirm that since the town received funding in the first round of the program, we're not eligible to apply again this year for additional funding. The Complete Streets Committee would like the select board to send a letter to both Senator Kennedy and Representative Harrington, seeking an explanation and assistance in getting the Complete Streets program opened up again for the town. So if it is okay with the board, I will draft a letter for Allison's signature to send off to both Representative Harrington and Senator Kennedy.
Yeah, Becky? So what is the reasoning to ask for this? I mean, if this is the standard policy, that if you get it one year, you can't continue?
Well, because we were under the assumption, that's a great, that's a great question. We were under the assumption last year that there were, there's George right there. We were under the assumption, and George, correct anything I'm saying that's wrong.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You will, right? Anyway, so we were under the assumption last year that you could apply. So we had two years' worth of pro, two years' worth of issues that we were ready to apply for. So we applied for the first set, and there's a whole nother set of programs and things that the Complete Streets Committee wants to get done. And unfortunately, they can't apply for another round. So the Complete Streets Committee would like us to send a letter asking for that clarification. And please, George, add anything you'd like to that.
So the Complete Streets program was initially developed as a five-year program, and the Complete Streets Committee meant to develop said five-year program. We applied for year one, received funding, attempted to apply for year two on the five-year program, and were not permitted to apply until such time that we completed year one, which we did. This spring, we tried to apply for year two funding of our five-year program, and we were notified in response that no town which received year one funding was going to be permitted to apply for year two. So the program is in hiatus for us because we were successful in year one. So we have four more years of program projects that we developed, and we can't do that.
So did we misunderstand, or did they?
We did not misunderstand.
They changed the rules after?
It's the state of Massachusetts. They changed the rules when they went to.
Okay.
So I'd like to draft a letter for Allison's approval.
I would agree with that.
In the letter, will you please explain exactly what George just said?
Yep, I will.
Where did the funding come from for the Complete Streets was?
MassDOT.
No, no, but where's MassDOT getting it? Is it, is it a grant from the federal people, or?
I think it's the bond bill.
It's out of the transportation bond bill?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay, I will have a letter for Allison's signature. As requested at your last meeting, I, Takashi and Nick, well, actually Takashi drafted a letter to the Town of Pepperell about the board's objection to the landfill. I thought Takashi did a great job drafting this. I'd ask the board to approve it, and just tell me who you want me to have sign it, to send.
Questions? Yeah, Becky?
Yeah, I thought it's a good letter. I would actually like to add a sentence at the end and just make it very clear and say that the Town of Groton strongly opposes the proposed soil reclamation project. Like to beef, beef up a little bit what we're saying here.
So the sentence will read, "The Town of Groton adamantly opposes?"
Yes, the proposed soil reclamation project. I also had three minor edits that I would suggest. I can just hand this down to you.
If you would, that would be great.
I think we should say preserving a clean and healthy riparian corridor, not a relatively clean one, and the others are really minor.
Good point.
Yeah, I like it. John?
I'd like to see us address this letter to our senator and our representative and carbon copy the town administrator of Pepperell.
Oh, sure.
Good idea.
Okay.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
Oh, and the question was who should sign it?
Want me to sign on behalf of the board?
How about having the chair sign?
Or have the chair sign, whatever the board wants.
On behalf of the board, yeah. I would agree.
Okay.
We'll have that for you, Allison, this week.
Any other questions, comments on this topic? All right.
And then the last thing I have in my town manager's report, and then I'll defer to the planning board appointment. I just wanted the public to know, we posted this on the website, we posted it on Facebook, we sent it out on Facebook, we've tweeted it out, and we have it on the doors of the town hall. Town hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday this week in observation of Independence Day. We will have a full day Wednesday from eight to four, normal hours on Wednesday, close Thursday and Friday. Reopen on Monday, July 8th. Just wanted to pass that along.
And the transfer station, though?
Transfer station is closed Thursday. They are open regular hours, Friday and Saturday.
The only thing I noticed on this, and I just picked up on it, is employees won't be charged holiday time, they'll be given holiday time.
Well, it's, it's, you're charged holiday time. You get 11 paid holidays, so you get charged eight hours of holiday pay. That's how, that's how it works.
It will utilize?
Right, will utilize. I'll change the word to utilize.
You don't have to change it, you just play it out.
It's 7:15, and I see members of the planning board here, and I believe you have a quorum. Do you guys want to come up? Because there's a joint meeting between the planning board and the select board. Is David here?
Yes.
Oh, hi, David, how are you? So I don't put you your last name.
Bryant.
Bryant, okay. Excellent. I didn't want to put you his last name. David, do you want to come up and sit at the table? Please? So just to talk about how this works, David, we, we have a policy that requires us to advertise the vacancy so many weeks in advance. We've done that. Takashi and Dawn took care of the advertising, so we complied with that. David was the only applicant for the position. The planning board, as, as our policy, the board with the vacancy interviews that person, makes a recommendation to the joint board of selectmen, planning board meeting, which you're holding right now. And if the board is agreeable, the appointment is made through next year's election. I believe Carolyn has two years left on her term, on the term. So this would be a one-year appointment to next year's election, and if David is so inclined, he would run for the remaining one-year seat, and then it'd become a three-year term again after that.
So the planning board is, is in session?
We'd like to, just for the record, the meeting of the planning board is called to order.
Very good. Okay.
And I'd like to also add that upon completion of the deliberation on Mr. Bonnet's appointment, the planning board will continue its meeting down, where, where we're continuing?
Lunchroom.
Into the lunchroom to take up some emergency business.
And I will point out that if you do make that appointment this evening, the town clerk is.
Don't give the bat, don't give the bat news yet.
Oh, don't give the bat news yet.
Okay. So my understanding is that you've appeared and spoken with the planning board, right?
Correct.
And they're in favor of this appointment? Are there questions, or?
I would add that David, through the course of the year, last year and this year, has attended many of our meetings in anticipation.
And he still wants to be on the board.
In anticipation of Carolyn's departure, so he's not a, a new face to us.
Fabulous. Yes, John?
I think it would be helpful if Mr. Bonnet gave us a little, just a brief summary of your background.
Sure. So it took me a while to get to volunteer, and that's, there's a reason there. So I'm a professional engineer. I've worked for the same company for 31 years. And originally, I'm actually from Montreal, and worked overseas in engineering, and then was offered a job with the company and was a landed alien for many years. As I decided to become a citizen, and that happened last year, and when I did, I.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Volunteered, I decided.
Just under the wire.
Yeah, I decided to, I, you know, want to, want to volunteer. So with my engineering background, I do civil and a lot of environmental work.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Absolutely. Any other questions, or?
I've just answered my questions.
All right.
So what I would ask for the process is somebody make the nomination, somebody second the nomination, and do a roll call vote of all members of the planning board present and select board present.
Would someone like to make that motion?
Make that motion.
Okay. Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Can we just go around the room?
Yes, I'm voting in favor. We'll call aye. Aye, aye, sorry.
Deacon, aye.
Riley, aye.
Manubian, aye.
Geiger, aye.
Mayor, aye.
Chicago, aye.
Burke, aye.
I forgot one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, that's, that's your unanimous vote. So now the bad news, the town clerk is waiting downstairs for you to swear you in so you can attend the meeting tonight and be an active member of the planning board. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to go into an update on the ongoing issues list if the board is With regards to the senior center building project, I had the opportunity to bring Mr. Geiger down last Thursday, and Becky joined me, was it last Tuesday, Becky?
Yeah.
Last Tuesday for a tour, and I know, John, you have gone through it.
Yeah.
Allison and I got our signals crossed. I'm still trying to get Allison and Josh down there, but the, the project continues to go, you know, well. We're trying to make up time that was lost when we had the stop-work audit issue, but things seem to be going pretty good with, with the project. We're hoping to be done by October 1st with, with the project, and everything seems to be back on track with it. So things continue to, to, to go well on the project. With regards to the Green Communities application and implementation, I have reached out to three, and I think I updated the board, did I update the board last week, two weeks ago? Since we met, have I given an update on where we are? Did I tell you we had a meeting with Karen Chapman?
I know we talked about it, but I'm not sure that you updated the board.
Okay, so let me give an update. Becky and I had scheduled a meeting with Karen Chapman from MRPC, who is helping us put together our formal application for, for the fall. She put into play what we need to do in terms of getting information on our energy use and consumption, when we're going to be able to submit that application. One of the first things we need to do is conduct an energy audit of our buildings. I have reached out to three engineering firms and asked for quotes on what that would cost. I'm hoping that somebody will come forward and say we'll do the energy audit for nothing as long as we get the work putting together the, the specs to implement the, the plan through the grant. That seems to be what Karen said to us. Correct me if I'm wrong, Becky, that that seems to be the way things are done.
Karen said that that is common.
Common.
And I guess that would mean it must be seen as legal.
Yep.
By the state.
Yep. So we're working on that now, but I will keep the board informed about progress on that. But this, this is one of the goals of the board, and I'd say we're, we're well underway. Is there anything you want to add?
No, we're lucky to have Karen leading this process, which is happening because we got, through Monmouth Regional Planning Commission. She seems to be very experienced and know exactly what needs to happen.
She's also the same person doing the affordable, the housing production plan update as well. With regards to the proposed, any questions on the Green Communities?
Yeah, a quick question.
Yep.
When you review the town buildings, you also review the school buildings, or?
They've already done a review, and Dawn has got that information, and we've already sent that off to Karen.
But that, those buildings potentially?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That was one of the things that we discussed, and we knew that Mike Knight was very much in favor of this program. Mark reached out to him and found out who, the name of the person who's replacing him, and we expect that she will.
They were on board 100%. As a matter of fact, Dr. Chesson signed the letter that says that they will allow the Town of Groton to have their information. So they, they were on board 100%.
Right.
That was one of the things you had asked me to do.
Right, and it's important that we include the schools in the whole process.
Absolutely.
Because our, you know, target of a 20% reduction may, we may get a lot of it through school buildings.
Yes, John?
I'm on the next one.
Oh, okay. On the policy major initiative planning?
No, the charter approval.
I'm going to get to that. I'm not to that one yet. With regard to the proposed policy on major initiative planning, Josh and I had a conversation this morning. We have this on your agenda for July 29th. We'll have a draft charge to the board for debate and consideration at your July 29th meeting. So I want to let you know that that is definitely in process and, and moving forward. I was going to give an update on the charter, but if you have an update, I will turn it over to you.
No, everybody should have seen the update that came from town council. But I'm concerned, because it isn't clear to me from looking at that, who is responsible for getting it through the second and the third reading?
Senator Kennedy's office is. Mike Bouchard has been in contact with Senator Kennedy's office. Senate council had a couple of questions. Mike sent new cert, as a matter of fact, Mike sent today new certified votes from our two town meeting votes that, that approved the charter, off to them. So Senator Kennedy's office is leading the charge on this.
Okay, the clock is running for the end of July, and I know the, the third reading is just a couple of people, and they can kill it like that.
They're not going to kill it.
So we need to track this thing really, really closely.
Our town clerk is on it, like you read about.
Well, and we need to be the opposite of, of, let's see, we want to be aggressive in following up.
We are aggressive.
That means calling them every day in there, or whatever.
I agree. Anything else on the charter?
Do we want to send a letter from the board to Senator Kennedy?
I don't think we need to. Mike Bouchard is really on top of this.
Ordinarily, I would completely agree with you, but in so much as we're approaching, was it three years now?
Two.
No, we're over two years. Okay, well, we're beyond two and approaching three, and if we wait this thing's going, we'll have a new charter review committee and a new charter before this thing gets approved. So it certainly wouldn't hurt to have a letter sent from this board urging support from Senator Kennedy at the third reading, and ultimately that this board seeks to have it voted on before summer recess.
Just approved.
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 As opposed to voting.
Yes, approved. And it'd be nice if we could send that letter off. Would everybody agree by consensus on that?
Yeah.
Thank you. And we should thank him for all of his efforts on behalf of the Town of Groton.
Well, I'll tell you, I had a, while you mentioned that, Josh, I had a conversation with Michelle Colette today. As you know, we went into Boston last week on the Olivia Way issue, and Senator Kennedy has really stepped up in terms of working with the community and making sure that our stuff is getting in there, and he was very well-prepared, well-versed on the, on the legislation. And Michelle said that he did a phenomenal job for us. I'm very, very happy, and I'm sure he's going to continue to do that on the charter.
That's great.
I wish he was in place two years ago, but.
He is now.
He is now. With regard to the Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study, I know three of you, one, two, three of you, were at the, at the meeting last week of the Florence Roach Building Committee. Had a, I thought, a very good discussion, well over an hour, discussing the feasibility, the statement of interest, how to proceed with the feasibility study. So I think we covered all that ground very well, and the, and the process moves on. Just to reiterate from where we are, the, the committee is in the process of issuing a request for proposal for designer services. It'll be advertised in the central register on July 24th. Proposals are due on August 21st. The committee will give it a look over and make a recommendation to the state, but it is the actual Commonwealths Committee through the MSBA, of which we have three voters, three votes, myself, the school superintendent, and a member of the school committee actually sit on that 13-member board, but they have 10 votes at the state level to approve it. So they will actually pick our designer. Once the designer's on board, there's a two-year feasibility study that will be done. Our, our OPM, Leftfield, I think, has done a really good job managing the project for us. So far, I know, John, you sat for the rest of the meeting with Allison, our Dunstable Selectmen and I. I'm sorry, going through the, going through the, the, the process, and I'm really comfortable with, with, with the leadership that they're giving us on this process. One of the things that they've done, if you look up on the screen, is they've developed a website, and people can look at that website. It's, what's it called again, Dawn?
FlorenceRoachProject.org.
FlorenceRoachProject.org. I would encourage people to go out there and look at it. It has a lot of functionality. You can, you can go down, you see who we are, who's on the building committee, who the owner, project manager is, eventually who the designer is. You can look at minutes and agendas. You can go through what the MSBA has. There's a frequently asked question piece that's going to be in there, and that'll get added to as more questions get done. And of course, any press releases and things like that will go out. But it's, it's a very intuitive website. It has a lot of good information on there, and I'd encourage people, if you want to stay on top of this project, this is where to go to get the information. Yes, Becky?
Under documents, does it include the, the SOI?
Statement of interest, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because I know that there's been a lot of discussion about that.
Yeah, like I said, it's very.
People can read it there.
Yep, so everything is right there for you to, for you to look at and to, and to, and to go through. And I would encourage people to, you know, look at the, the minutes, because there, there are agendas, there are minutes there that are done, and the, and the minutes are done by the OPM, so they're very detailed, and I think they're, they're very good. So this project is, is in its infancy, obviously. We're just getting started. The real meat and potatoes will happen once the designer is, gets on board, and that vote is before the state on September 13th, I believe. Allison, correct me if I'm wrong on that date.
I believe that's correct.
I believe it's September 13th. So we'll be in Boston on that date to, to, to do that. So please, if you have a chance, go through the website, take a look at the documents, and I encourage the public to, to, to go look at it as well. It's there for you.
Who maintains the website?
The OPM. So it'll be constantly updated.
Okay.
There'll be... We did talk about having a link...
Our OPM?
Left Field. Left Field is our OPM.
Okay.
Yeah. That's... When I say our, I mean the Committee's OPM. It's Left Field. So they'll be the ones that are doing it, and they'll update it regularly. The person who's in charge of it's really, really sharp, and she's on top of things. So that's what's going on there. Highway Garage renovations. To give you an update, I'm very, very excited to say that I issued today the notice to proceed. We had a really good kickoff meeting with the contractor and all the subcontractors today, this morning. The Building Committee, John was present as a member of the Building Committee, along with Mike Bouchard and Val Press, myself, Bob Garcia, Tom Delaney, and of course Greg Yanchenko were there, along with all the contractors. We went through all the important things, the milestones, the dates, the process, the procedure. John will tell you, we are very lucky that we have such a... So a taskmaster as our architect, because he is a stickler for making sure things are done by the book. And he made it very clear to the contractor, but the contractors seem to be very competent. They've already started. As a matter of fact, the notice to proceed says that the project start, because they have 180 days to complete the project, the project start is on...
Monday, July?
Monday, July 8th. And Greg said to him, "When are you planning on being on the site?" And he goes, "Monday, July 8th," because they know they have 180 days to get this project done, and they want to get it done. And they're ready, they're already started with the demolition permit, they've already filed all the paperwork for that. The building permit will be issued, you know, Eddie Catallos ready to issue the building permit once they file the proper paperwork. So I feel really, we're off to a good start, and hopefully this project will go smooth. And yes, John started a pool today, which one would be finished first, the senior center or the highway garage? Or was that me? Somebody started that.
It wasn't me, but that was me.
Just a little humor.
How about the library roof?
Well, with the library roof, that's going to...
We should put that in the pool.
Yeah, we should put that in the pool. That notice to proceed was issued last week, and the HDC approved the slate, preliminary approved the slate before the public hearing, so that we can audit, because there was a 10-week lead time. So that project is well underway as well.
Who's the OPM for the roof?
Bob.
Okay.
Bob Garcia is the OPM for both projects. Three projects, yeah. He's a clerk on one, OPM and clerk on two others, but money well spent. John can tell you, he came in today, he knows those specs in and out, he knows that project in and out. He's very lucky to have him.
I've got a lot of confidence for him, and therefore I don't have any more questions about the library roof.
Good.
Do you consider creating a permanent position within the Town of Groton for Bob?
Well, I'll tell you this.
I don't mean that as a joke.
No, I know, I know.
We have so many building projects, as well as so much oversight of existing property that you may want to consider...
There might be something different about...
...when we look at the capital assets, that we may want to make a recommendation, not necessarily for Bob, because obviously it has to be put out, but we need to look at whether or not we want a standing OPM within the town.
I don't know if there'll be a lot of work, but that's something to think about. Yes, Becky?
Yeah, so somewhat building on that permit, we have F is the Committee Charge for Capital Planning Committee, and...
Yeah, I need to combine those two, and I've been meaning to do that.
There's the Policy on Major Initiative Planning is B, and we... I thought we discussed months ago.
We did, and I just didn't fix it. I will fix it.
Okay.
That one comes off. And it's the proposed policy on major initiative planning that is the important one.
And the sidewalk installation is all but done, except for there's still some crosswalk signs, is that correct?
No, it's done. I don't know why the Board told me to leave it on there.
Well, John...
Because it isn't done.
It isn't done.
There are, and it's in the minutes, there is no flashing lights at the crosswalk nearest to the middle school.
Oh, I talked to Tom Delaney about that.
Because that's... It's on the state side of the boundary.
Yep, you're right.
And yet, it's one that's used for youngsters coming...
Yeah.
Up from Petruity Road and that whole area down there, walking to school, and you've got to cross that road.
Right. And also, the crosswalk is...
And they put the crosswalk there. You know, they put the lines on the road and built the ramps and did all that.
But no flashes. And also, aren't we still waiting for something in front of the cafe?
That's on audit. There's a long lead time to get that, but we've audited that. That's ours. That's not the state.
Oh.
Getting an answer to the crosswalk issue is important, because it's been...
You're right, you're right. I'm sorry, totally slipped my...
Probably the most important crosswalk in town.
It's an important one. Yep. So that's all I have.
Very good.